Please take our seats. Welcome to this evening's meeting. We're gonna have our invocation by Reverend Jerome Council, light of our Savior ministries. It'll be followed by the pledge of allegiance. If you would, please stand with me.
Would you please bow your heads, please? Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for many and abundant blessings. Thank you even for life itself. For the measure of health, we need to fulfill our calling for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you, dear Father, for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thanks as well for the freedom to embrace you and the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us even so from your boundless and gracious nature. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, dear Father, I pray for our chairman, for each commissioner, and the county staff assembled, even for those who attended within the sound of my voice. I'm asking, dear Father, that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflict in interests and issues of our times. A sense of the welfare and true needs of our people. A keen thirst for justice and righteousness. Confidence in what is good and fitting. The ability to govern, to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. Person of peace in every one of our individual lives and joy in the task that's before us. I pray for the agenda that is set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit the residents of Clayton County. Dear Father, we thank you for the opportunity to live in a country where God is the Lord. And we are grateful. And ask you, dear Father, that you will continue abide among us. This is your servant's prayer. In Jesus' name, amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the December 4th, 2018 regular business meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Before doing so, Mr. Chairman, if I could ask that Item A on the consent agenda, the approval of the November 20th, 2018 regular business meeting minutes, if that could be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda. We had two commissioners absent. And it would be better served if it was voted separately.
Okay, I'll put that in form of motions. There a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Unanimous? Madam Clerk, I also would like to remove Item R on the consent agenda to approve the MAG study compensation recommendation. It's still not ready to go as of yet. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Is she unanimous? Madam Clerk, I also would like on the regular agenda, the Resolution 2018-123, amending the conservation easement between Lake Spivey Golf Club. That easement by amending it would allow for a restaurant district as well as, I believe, a urban village concept. Mr. Emerson held a meeting two or three weeks ago where the majority of the people from the Spivey Club HOA were in attendance. And the majority of them were totally against this development. And I think if we would remove it, that would give the incoming commissioner time to talk to the people. Because when Mr. Emerson is gone, he's gonna have to catch all the flak if this is not properly vetted and presented to the people in a way that they can accept it. And that's the reason why I would like to see this removed or tabled from this agenda. Is there a second?
A second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Three, two, it passes. It remains, rather. Are there any other amendments?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. I'd like to have Items D, as well as E, F, and H also put on the regular agenda.
Which items again?
On the consent agenda, Items D. Well, you already... Oh, no. Yeah, D, E, and F.
All right, the motion is to put D, E, and F on the regular agenda. Take it off of the consent agenda. Suck in the motion.
And then one more, H. I do have a question.
And H. D, E, F, and H. Those in... All sucking the motion also. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Is she unanimous? Any others? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, with the amendments, may we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
All right, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Those in favor?
Adopt the entire agenda, not just the consent agenda.
That's correct.
I'm sorry. Good point. The consent, I mean the entire agenda. Those in favor, aye.
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 Is she unanimous?
Approval of the November 20th, 2018 regular business meeting minutes?
So a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Abstain.
Abstain, please.
Two abstentions. Three, four.
The board has two proclamations to present this evening. The first, Clayton County recognizes Bud Smith, photographer and photojournalist, for his commitment to capturing memorable periods in time as presented by Commissioner Felicia Franklin Warner. This is Mr. Bud Smith, as well as family and friends.
Mr. Chair, if I can have a quick point of privilege, this was a surprise to Mr. Bud Smith, so you do need to come down. And with others that are here on his behalf, I think there are some folks from either Jet or Ebony magazines or folks from Atlanta. Ms. Joycelyn Lee, y'all come on down. For those that don't know, you'll hear it in the proclamation, but Mr. Bud Smith is a jewel here in Clayton County. We always known him just as Mr. Bud Smith, but I promise you, if you Google his name, he's photographed everyone, every president, as well as every African-American city of Atlanta mayor. Also, Mr. Nelson Mandela, as we celebrate his 100th birthday.
All right, can everybody see me here? There you go. All right, on three. One, two, and three. Again. One, two, and three. Last time, one, two, and three.
One here. One more, one here. Two more. Right here. Good. One, two, one, two, another one. One, two, one, two. Good.
One more.
That's what happens when you have all these professional photographers.
I helped raise them, so I had to do it.
And now the reading of the proclamation. Clayton County recognizes Bud Smith, photographer and photojournalist. Whereas Bud Smith has served the Clayton County and surrounding communities as a dedicated photographer and community servant, capturing memorable periods in time featuring leaders of the civil rights movement and iconic entertainers. And whereas drafted as a valued member of the United States Army in 1969, Mr. Smith served his country in Korea as a dental hygienist, concentrating on dental x-ray. And whereas, as a photojournalist, Mr. Smith has photographed the Martin Luther King Jr. legacy, composed photojournalism for Ebony, Jet, Life, Time, Black Enterprise, and Homes of Color publications. In addition, he has partnered with numerous corporations such as Anheuser-Busch, Kraft's Food, ExxonMobil, the United Negro College Fund, National Black Arts Festival, Atlanta Convention and Visitors Bureau, and the Atlanta Chapter of Big Brothers and Big Sisters. And whereas, he was one of the first photographers to highlight the construction and building of the Metropolitan Atlanta Rapid Transit Authority and the world's busiest airport, Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International. Now, therefore, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, I, Felicia Franklin Warner, Commissioner, ask that you join me in honoring Bud Smith, photographer and photojournalist, for the commitment to Clayton County and our surrounding community in regards to documentation and support. In witness thereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this fourth day of December in the year 2018.
That work will live forever.
For those that don't know, Mr. Smith does have a gallery right across the street from the Train Depot. Please go take a look at it. He's got pictures of Michael Jackson, of all presidents, including, I think, George W. and George H. Bush. So please go by and take a look. These are his photographs.
And for our final proclamation, Clayton County recognizes Zeta Mu New Chapter of Omega Psi Phi presented by Commissioner Sona Gregory. Will the fraternity members please come forward at this time?
You okay over there? Yes, he okay over there?
It's okay.
You know how give you a hard time. This is another time. No, it's not. This actually goes from time to time. She said okay. Oh, Lord. Not, not you. Look at you. He got the most. He do got the most. Standing beside him, I mean, in the bright. Hold him up. Stand up aside, hold him up, face.
And now the reading of the proclamation. Clayton County Board of Commissioners honors Zeta Mu New Chapter of Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated. Whereas the Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated was founded in 1911 on the campus of Howard University in Washington DC by three undergraduate students with the assistance of their faculty advisor. The initials of the Greek phrase meaning "friendship is essential to the soul", the name Omega Psi Phi was derived, and the phrase was selected as the motto. Manhood, scholarship, perseverance, and uplift were adopted as cardinal principles and established over 700 chapters in the United States and around the world. And whereas, the Zeta Mu New Chapter of Omega Psi Phi Fraternity was chartered on September 26, 2014, and proudly serves the Henry and Clayton County areas. This chapter focused on growing the organization socially, partnering with government organizations when appropriate, registering people to vote in Clayton and Henry Counties, and becoming an active partner with the Red Cross. And whereas, the Zeta Mu New Chapter of Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated and its members increased membership from 26 members to 102 members, which created more socially and active members in the service area. Has become an active life member of the NAACP, registered over 100 new voters, hosted blood drives, and donated over 120 pints of blood. Partnered with the Hurie Elementary School, which included active weekly readers. Donated $2,000 to its school operations fund. And along with Hurie Elementary, Zeta Mu New gave out over $15,000 in scholarships and philanthropic donations. And whereas, the fraternity members volunteer countless man-hours and donate thousands of dollars to multiple projects with the purpose of uplifting and encouraging citizens of their communities to achieve higher social, economic, and intellectual statuses. Zeta Mu New Chapter contributed 3,054 community service hours to Clayton and Henry Counties in 2018. For its service, they were awarded the 2018 Georgia Social Action Chapter of the Year, which is remarkable for a four-year-old chapter. And whereas, the Zeta Mu New Chapter of Omega Psi Phi Fraternity seeks to occupy a progressive, cooperative, and constructive place in the civic and political life of the communities, nation, and world. Now, therefore, I, Sona Single Gregory, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby recognize and honor the Zeta Mu New Chapter of Omega Psi Phi Fraternity for their outstanding contributions. In witness thereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this fourth day of December in the year 2018.
President Nigel, President Nigel.
Well, thank you very much. You know, this doesn't actually probably belong to me because I'm a incoming president. The president that this fellow under is Brother Greg, God.
Well, just on behalf of the fraternity, the chapter of Zeta Mu New, we just want to thank you for the recognition. And we are pushing forward. Nigel has a great agenda for social action in the community. And we look forward to continuing to be a support and a progressive group of young men in this, and some was not so young, but in the community. And so we thank you, and we thank you for our recognition.
And I just want to thank Commissioner Gregory. I want to thank Commissioner Gregory for looking out and looking out into the community and being able to recognize us and giving us the opportunity to shine our light onto the citizens of Clayton County.
Mr. Chairman, the board will now consider the consent agenda with the exceptions of A, D, E, F, and R.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Well, there's also H.
Yes, also should be H in there. Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Was H moved to the consent agenda?
Yeah. H of the consent agenda. Yeah, D, E, F, H, and R. So, man, was it your motion?
It was my move.
Well, I can say it first.
H was placed on the regular agenda. Thank you for the correction.
Yes. All right. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Is she unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, I will call on Carol Rogers to address Items D, E, and F from the consent agenda.
Good evening. Do you want me to take them all at once, or?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Take it separately.
Okay, will do. All right. First one is a recommendation for award. That's ITB 18-192, which is Lake Spivey Multi-Use Trail Construction Phase IV for Clayton County, Georgia. The recommendation is for award to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, meeting the specifications, which is Integrated Construction and Nobility Inc., located in Whitesboro, Georgia, in the amount of $1,821,371.52. Funding is available through the 2009 SPOLOST Fund. The request is for you to approve the recommendation. Authorize the chairman or his designated to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract and authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Yes, sir. I have a question. What was the original amount budgeted for this project? Because it comes from the SPOLOST, whether it's the CFO, somebody should have that answer.
Right. I think it's definitely...
I want to know what was the original amount when it was first voted on.
Commissioner, these trail projects are paid out of our Park and Development Green Space Fund. And you don't get an individual budget per phase until you go through the design phase. And it depends on whether or not land needs to be acquired for wide away, if any parcels need to be purchased or if the land is all in our possession. So there wasn't an individual one. We worked off of what we estimated the cost of construction would be. But this was earmarked as part of the master plan that was approved by the board, to my understanding, prior to coming to work in February 2017. So this is part of the build-out. This is the final phase of the trail system that circumnavigates International Park.
Okay. And it may be because, and I dare not say new because one of my commissioners will look at me. But this, I'm looking at it and it reads 2,009 SPOLOST. But we're saying we're getting it from the Park and Green Space Fund. So how did we, because this was, this predates me, so how did we appropriate funds for, to be used in each district if the funds were not, I guess, divvied up, if there was not an original amount? Help me understand that.
Well, there was trail development and green space money in more than one year's SPOLOST program. Okay? Like, for instance, prior SPOLOST green space development and trail money was used to purchase Rivers Edge Golf Course and put it into green space. And we're using some of those funds to develop the trail down in that system, in that section. So there was, we had park development and green space funding in more than one SPOLOST year. Okay? So this came out of the appropriate years fund that was accumulated during that years, those years of collection.
Okay, so I'd need to delve a little bit more into this Park and Green Space Fund. Okay, thank you so very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye. Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Four, one, it passes. Next.
Next item is recommendation for the renewal of the county's public entity excess liability insurance coverage. This is for the policy period of December 31st, 2018 to December 31st, 2019. The recommendation is to renew the coverage through Epic, which is the insurance broker and consultant firm for the county. They're recommending that we utilize Argonaut Insurance Company, who is our current carrier. The premium is $485,073. This is a 1% increase of $3,410. The policy provides coverage for claims of bodily injury, property damage, public officials liability, law enforcement liability, errors and omissions, employment practices liability, employee benefits liability, when the amount of the claim exceeds the county's self-insured retention rate. Funding is available through the county's general fund 2019. The request is for you to approve the recommendation. Authorize the chairman, his designated, to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract and authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Here and none. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Four, one, it passes. Next.
Next item is a recommendation for renewal of the county's property and brawler and machinery policy. This is for the policy period of January 1st, 2019 to January 1st, 2020. The recommendation is to renew the policy through Epic, which is the county's insurance broker and consultant firm. And they're recommending that we utilize Travelist Property Casualty Company of America. They are our current carrier. The premium is $226,911. This is a 3.97% interest, I'm sorry, increase in the amount of $9,709. The policy provides insurance coverage on county-owned and leased buildings, their contents, garage-owned and leased vehicles and equipment. Funding is available through the county's general fund 2019. I request you approve the recommendation. Authorize the chairman, his designated, to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the interest of the contract and authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Here and none. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Four, one, it passes. Next.
That's all I have, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, for Item H, I will call on Ramona Bivins, the chief financial officer.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Mr. Vice Chair and Commissioners, excuse me. I have one item, Budget Amendment 2-16. It's from General Fund. This is to amend the budget in the amount of $49,267 to cover the cost of repaying the Board of Regents for unspent grant funds for the library.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Yes, it's not so much a question, Mr. Chair. I just understand with grant funding, whenever we send... I just understand with grant funding, whenever we send money back, it impedes.
So, what you just saying?
No, no, I was thinking. I'm talking to myself, but I'm thinking the same thing you were saying.
Oh, okay. Okay, so, I was just asking, because what happens is when you send money back to where it comes from, it impedes our ability to get that money once again, so I'm just trying to figure out where we couldn't find a place to spend some money, if it's grant money.
Well, again, this is for the librarian. What happened during the time where there was, where the administrator was on leave at that time, that was, well, with this grant, we get checks in advance. We don't, it's not a reimbursement grant, like most of our grants are reimbursement grants. So, you can say, okay, I spent this much money, I had this much more money to spend. On this one, they send you a check every month. And during that period is when our librarian was away at that time, so, and she typically would call and let us know, okay, I need to allocate money for this account and that money just to get spent during that time.
Okay, so.
And you're right, I do understand what you're saying.
Let me make this statement, and then, I don't mean it in any way. We don't need to be sending money back. So, I don't think that it just relies on the librarian. I think that as a finance department, we have a huge department, we can monitor these funds and we can monitor the dates because we don't want to send money back. That's all I want to say.
Right, we do, and with that one, we can't just spend the funds, it has to be spent according to that grant, and only the library could tell us what their needs are. So, we can't just go out and say, okay, because we have this money here, we want to go spend it, so we won't let it go back. We have to rely on that department, that the funds were awarded to, to let us know where they're going to spend that money, because they know what they need and they wrote that grant for specific items. But I, we shouldn't be sending funds back.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Those in favor, aye. Aye, opposed. She knows.
The board will now consider the requests of the Director of Human Resources, Pamela Ambles.
First and foremost, good evening Clayton County citizens. Good evening Chairman, Vice Chair Commissioners. Human Resources has only one request this evening. On behalf of Parks and Recreation, Human Resources is requesting to delete Aquatics Coordinator, Grade Eighteen Step One, total compensation fifty-one thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars. We're also requesting to delete Custodian, Grade Eight Step One, Total Comp thirty-four six oh seven. We are requesting to add a Marketing and Communications Superintendent, Grade Twenty Step One, Total Comp fifty-six four ninety-three, for savings of twenty-nine nine nine seven.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hodges.
How you doing, Commissioners?
I'm getting you. I'm not sure that we can afford to get rid or to remove these positions. I have concern with how they were, how you came up with this, as well as the fact that we're going to remove some vital positions in Parks and Rec, because you and I've had conversations about Parks and Rec, and I think that every position that's already there is well-needed. So, if you need to do something different, then we need to do it during a budgetary cycle as opposed to bringing it before this board in this manner. That's only my personal opinion, and that's what I wanted to say.
Well, I got a question, why, why are we doing this now, instead of waiting for the budget?
We, we have a great opportunity right now in Parks and Recreation with the upcoming projects.
What's the projects? I'm sorry to cut you off.
Projects in District Board Recreation Center, the intergenerational facility, the renovations to the beach, the trails that we're fixing to build. We have, there's several grants that are open right now with the National Parks Recreation Association. I would like to establish a partners in recreation program to bring in additional funding to the department that we have not done before.
And this position would be a marketing and communication superintendent?
Superintendent, yes, sir.
Do you not have a marketing person now?
Yes, sir.
So, why do we need another?
We would have, that would bring us to two superintendents and one deputy administrator.
So, you got one superintendent and you have another person doing marketing as well. We have a communications department that has a marketing communications person, and you want to add another one and delete two. I guess you're saying that those two positions aren't vital to your operations, that you're trying to delete.
The custodian and the aquatic coordinator.
Okay.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I was just going to say, I don't, I'm still not understanding how we feel like we don't need a custodian and an aquatic coordinator when that's when I get a majority of my complaints on scheduling of the pool, as well as on, we've been working on the cleanliness. Well, I have to admit, I went to one of the facilities and it looked really good, but I will say this, a lot of times when I ask you about the cleanliness of it, I get back, well, this is an old building, and when I go to other areas that have thirty and forty-year-old buildings and they look better than some of ours, that's concerning, that as a Parks and Rec Director, you would stand before us and ask to delete a custodian position. And how, how much are we currently paying the communications person that's already doing advertising?
That's a pay grade twenty.
Okay, I asked specifically how much, not, because people don't understand pay grades.
Does that benefit us too?
Yeah, the total compensation is fifty-six thousand four ninety-three.
Does that benefit, says Mr. Chair, does it?
Yes, ma'am, it does. That's total compensation.
That's for the current person or what you're proposing?
That's for the current person. We have to, to retain parity, we have to have them at the same pay grade.
So, we're going to basically get rid of somebody that keeps our place clean and aquatic coordinator, which I also would have helped us make sure that our, one of our other facilities was staffed properly, that I got complaints on this week as well. And we're going to create another marketing person, and a marketing person is different than a grant writer. We do understand that, right? That's two different things, Mr. Chair. I don't mean to be rude, but they're two different things. You can't lump them together.
The custodian position is a pay grade eight, and it has not been filled in, well, it has never been filled. The aquatic coordinator position is not at any of our facilities. It's at International Park, which has been closed for this past year.
For the sake of not prolonging the meeting, since you brought it up, what is the plan for the Aquatic Center? It's been closed for the long, I mean, over at the beach, it's been closed. So, what are you going to market? I mean, is it going to be open next year? What are we doing?
There's, there's going to be, you know, there's a plan being developed and it will be brought before the board.
I have two last questions. Who does your grants now? Who's writing your grants now?
We have not applied for any grants.
You have not applied for any grants?
Yes, sir.
And what would this person do in terms of your, I think you said something about your accreditation or something?
Yes, sir. Right now, we are nationally accredited agency, and we would like to take that accreditation to the next step, which is, it's called a gold medal agency through the National Parks Recreation Association.
And who's been doing that work for you? Because you've been accredited for eight years now.
We, we all do that work.
Now, this one person is going to do all the work?
If I understood your question correctly, who's been doing, being, in charge of the accreditation?
Because you got to get renewed, I guess, every year, right?
Every five years we become renewed.
Five years, so you've been there eight years, so, three years ago, who did it for you?
The entire department.
And now, you're going to put it on one person?
Well, I mean, actually, the sales and marketing staff will do that.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, sir, not for me.
All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Nay.
Three, two that passes.
Thank you.
All right, please, we're not going to have any outbursts. Please, keep the comments to yourself.
County Attorney Jack Hancock.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, two resolutions for your consideration tonight. Resolution two thousand eighteen one twenty-two is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to amend the intergovernmental agreement with the Development Authority of Clayton County for the promotion of economic development in the county, to authorize the chairman to execute the agreement to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary, to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense relating thereto, to provide an effective date to this resolution and for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? I have a few for you. Okay, go ahead. Ladies first.
No, sir, I'm going to let you ask your questions, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So, this agreement reads that now both parties, the Board of Commissioners and the Development Authority, has to agree in order to terminate. Now, prior to that, the first amendment, or when we adopted the IGA the first time,
Yes, sir.
it was either party could separate.
That is correct. The language in the originally adopted agreement provided that either party could terminate the agreement and that termination would become effective one hundred and eighty days after that action.
So, now, it takes their board and our board to agree upon it before it can be terminated?
That is correct. If you approve this change, that would be correct.
And within this new IGA, they're asking, the Development Authority is asking for the tax allocation money or districts' money to come from District Five funds and the Clayton's, the Central Clayton Commercial Corridors Tax Allocation District Number Three. All those funds to be transferred to the Development Authority.
That would be the effect of this modification, yes, sir.
So, in the Clayton Central TAD, there's three point six million in that one. Correct me if I'm incorrect, Madam CFO. And in the Mountain View TAD, there's roughly about one point three million. So, one of the questions I would pose to my board as well is that, back in August, I think it was August seventh or so, we signed an agreement or passed a resolution that we wouldn't pass major amounts of money and leave it for the new board to have a say, when I say new board, at least have the new commissioner to come in and weigh in on large amounts of money and purchases and sales of property. So, this resolution is contradicting that strictly on basis of the amounts of money that is being proposed to transfer. So, I have a problem with that, first and foremost. My other problem, of course, is to have an agreement between both boards to have to agree to terminate before it can be done. So, we need the development, get the Development Authority's permission to direct us or to allow us, Mr. Benoit, please, to separate or to end the IGA agreement. So, we're basically being held hostage by the Development Authority if we chose to end the IGA with the Development Authority. So, I find that this resolution in its entirety, if nothing else, is a farce, and I really, really are, I'm offended by it, really. So, I want my commissioners to really consider not voting for this based on what I've just outlined, Commissioner.
I just want to hear what Mr. Hancock has to say about the dollar amount being in violation of the ordinance that was passed. We did pass an ordinance that stated that we would only, a resolution, I'm sorry. Y'all know mommy brain, I mix up stuff, I mixed up, mixed up the presidents. But, anyway, we did pass a resolution that stated that we would not move forward on any major fund distributions that were not previously budgeted. And to be quite honest with you, that came from best practices from other jurisdictions. So, I want to know, as our attorney, who is supposed to be here to protect this county and the citizens of this county, I'm sorry, I want to know, how are we able to vote as a board considering that that resolution is currently in place? That's all I want to know.
Well, thank you, ma'am, Madam Commissioner, and I appreciate your attempt to put this on me, it's not me. It's not a legal.
No, 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 no. It's the resolution and the dollar amount. That is illegal.
The dollar amount has nothing to do with it, because you didn't put a, you did not in the resolution that you passed, and as we discussed about, we had this discussion when you passed this resolution. And that was that it had effectively, you could do whatever the majority of the board voted to do. You expressed in that resolution an intent, and I believe, if I'm not badly mistaken, that resolution said that you would not take major action unless it was fully vetted. Now, that's a decision that you as a board has to make. If your question to me is, is it legal for this board by majority vote to approve this resolution in light of what you passed before, the answer to that question is yes. It is legal for you to do that.
I'm going to withhold my comment, sir, because, see, this is a deal on this, because I asked you to draft that resolution specifically, and I gave you the intent of that resolution. And that intent of the resolution came directly from ACCG as well as other jurisdictions. And I asked you specifically to make sure that we didn't end up in situations like this, so that we would not have, be bound going into a new year. You and I had that conversation, so as our legal counsel, based upon our home rule right now, I can ask you that. And that's what I asked you to do. So, if you're telling me that the piece of resolution that you brought back to this board does not accomplish those intents, then that means that what I asked you to do was not done, and that's all I have to say.
Well, if I might, Mr. Chairman, because that's, that is, that is the conversation that we had at that point in time. I told you that a majority of the Board of Commissioners can decide to do whatever they decide to do. What I told you was that you could pass, and as I recall, that resolution passed unanimously. I am absolutely positive that the language of that resolution said that you would not pass matters of major import without it being fully vetted. That's what it said. Now, you approved that, okay? You're now choosing, if the majority approves this resolution, they are choosing to approve it. They have the legal right to do that. You cannot pass a resolution that binds the same board from changing their mind. You can't do it. It's, it has nothing to do with your lawyer.
So, the last thing I am going to say on record, the original resolution, as Chairman stated, the date was prior to, was that prior to the election or after the election?
No, it was after the election.
It was after the election, but it was after a person was removed and then they took the seat back, so, that's all I got to say, of the Economic Development Board. I'm done.
All right, I have a question, but it might be best asked from somebody from the Development Authority, or anybody from the Development Authority here, other than Commissioner Edson. Because my question needs to be, if the TAD money is transferred over to them, what assurances do we have that it's going to be used for the purposes it's intended for? I would need an answer for that, and who's going to monitor that money? Right now, it's being monitored and dispersed according, well, by the finance department. So, that would be a concern of mine as well, but of course, nobody from the Development Authority is here to answer that, so, we'll move on. Any other questions?
No, sir.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Nay.
It's three, two that passes. Let me say this, okay? All right, we all can agree to disagree, but can we do it in a civil way? You know, even if you don't hear what you're, like what you hear, let's definitely make sure that we are respectful of the people who are speaking and not have these type outbursts. I would hate to have to start, you know, asking people to go to the back of the room or leave out because of the outbursts. So, please, let's keep it tempered. Yes, sir.
Resolution two thousand eighteen one twenty-three is a resolution to amend the conservation easement between Lakes Fivey Golf Club, Inc. and Clayton County, Georgia, to authorize the chairman to execute all documents necessary to carry out the same and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the resolution, to provide an effective date to this resolution and for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or statements?
I just still have concerns about the legality of what we're doing, and regardless of the previous conversations I had, you know, one thing I've learned of this whole world, of this litigious society, the reason we have a litigious society is because there's always two sides, so, it's just concerning.
And my comments remain the same, that I think that this should be voted down and the new incoming commissioner for that district and area should have the opportunity to sit down with the people who will be directly impacted by whatever development may come to that area. The easement, if it remains in place, will assure that there's nothing built there until the board, after the first of the year, would make a conscious decision to move forward, or not to move forward. or not to move forward. But again, there's no urgency in passing this, other than, I guess it has to be done before the end of the year to make sure that certain things happen or are in place. But at the end of the day, it would be my desire and hope that we would vote this down. Any other comments, statements, questions? Those in favor, I.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Three, two, it passes.
Chairman, we need a short executive session.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, on what matters?
Litigation.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, item number ten is a zoning petition. The applicant is Eco Site LLC, and requests is for a conditional use permit for the construction of a cell tower. The subject property is located at six two six five Terra Boulevard, Jonesboro, Georgia. The public hearing has already been held, it was held on November twentieth. Therefore, this petition is just listed for a decision only. The planning and zoning staff, as well as ZAG, are recommending approval with conditions. This is District Four Vice Chairman Michael Edmondson.
All right, is there a motion for this? Is there a motion? I'll make the motion, is there a second? Is there a second? Mr. Hancock, this is the same thing, same item that came up, that we would have to really was handcuffed in terms of making a decision on.
Yes, sir. I mean, the effect, under the Federal Communications Act regulations, if you don't make a decision, that is tantamount to a denial. So the applicant will have the right, if you don't make a decision, to seek, to compel the board to, and to get the, and it's a little bit different with a cell tower, because that is controlled by federal regulations as opposed to local zoning laws. And the federal law would permit the applicant to go to federal court and seek an order from the federal judge that compels, in a state court action, they would remand it to you as a first step for reconsideration. In a federal action involving a cell tower, they would compel the board to allow it, or the county to allow it, so it would be taken out of your hands. But it is the same thing that we've talked about.
Basically, they would sue us for it.
I'm sorry.
They would sue us for it.
Yes, sir. They would sue us in federal, they would sue the county in federal court, and ask the court to enter an order compelling that the permit be issued to allow them to build a petal.
All right, I made the motion, is there a second?
I'm gonna second it based upon that, I guess.
Any questions, comments, concerns?
The only comment I have is that it's a shame that we just have one more meeting, but we've got certain folks that are putting this county in a precarious situation, and it's most concerning. But you know what, Mr. Chair, and it's not about this, and I'm gonna ask for a point of privilege, because I am elected.
I'll give you that after we take the vote.
Okay, I'll take it.
Any other questions? All right, those in favor, I.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Three, two, it fails.
Okay, my point of privilege, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Gregory voted in favor.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
It passed?
It's three, two, it passes. My apologies, Commissioner. All right, point of privilege, go ahead.
I don't know if it's worth it now.
Can we find out what three?
Did you vote for it or against it?
Chairman Turner, Commissioner Warner, and Commissioner Gregory.
I wanted the clerk, I wanted the clerk to read who, uh...
It was Chairman Turner, Commissioner Warner, and Commissioner Gregory. That was the three.
And Mr. Hamburg.
Commissioner Hamburg.
Commissioner Hamburg as well. Thank you.
What about you, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, the vote was four to...
You were no?
I'm no.
Okay, four, one. It passes.
Four, one, thank you.
I thought we had streetlight.
Well, that was in the...
It was in the, it was sent.
Oh, that's right. Okay, with that being said, can I get a motion going to executive session for litigation?
So moved.
I'll second, those in favor, I.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Okay, motion to reconvene. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, I.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please state your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
Dr. Henry Anderson.
Henry Anderson, unincorporated Clayton County, Hampton, Georgia. Good evening. In continuing to talk about and discuss crime and criminal activity in all of Clayton County, I will start with the seventh major crime category, which is simple assaults. Simple assault is defined as the least serious form of assault, and it involves a minor injury or eliminated threat of violence. The law defines assault as threatening behavior that puts another person in fear. So an example with this would be if a person threatens to punch someone, that would be classified as a simple assault, because that person would be fearful of the punch, and that person would also be placed in a state of reasonable apprehension, in even fear of immediately receiving a violent injury, even though no punch was thrown or attempted. Last year, two thousand seventeen, in unincorporated Clayton County, which is under the jurisdiction and control of the Clayton County Police Department, there were two thousand nine hundred and forty-nine reported cases of simple assaults compared to three thousand one hundred and twenty-one reported cases in two thousand and sixteen, and three thousand two hundred and four reported cases in two thousand and fifteen. Last year, two thousand seventeen, in all of Clayton County, including unincorporated Clayton County, there were a grand total of three thousand nine hundred and forty-seven reported cases of simple assaults compared to four thousand ninety-eight reported cases in two thousand and sixteen, and four thousand six hundred reported cases in two thousand and fifteen. The analysis to date, last year, two thousand seventeen, the number of reported cases of simple assaults in unincorporated Clayton County decreased by one hundred and seventy-two from two thousand sixteen, and decreased by two hundred and fifty-five when compared to two thousand and fifteen. Last year, two thousand seventeen, the number of reported cases of simple assaults in all of Clayton County decreased by one hundred and fifty-one from two thousand and sixteen, and decreased by one hundred and twenty-two when compared to two thousand and fifteen. The commentary, even though the simple assault crime rate is on a decrease in unincorporated Clayton County, as well as all of Clayton County, it still remains very high when compared to the overall population of people in Clayton County, and is widespread, rampant, and all over the entire Clayton County region in the area, its seven cities, and is even rampant throughout the Clayton County school system, with the constant and ever increasing incidences of bullying, intimidation, harassment, gang activity, threatening, mean, and hostile actions, behaviors, and conduct of a good number of the teenagers, and even the pre-teens in the Clayton County school system, that they perpetrate and carry out against each other, and in many cases, is and goes underreported by the administrators of the Clayton County school system. I will continue to give the crime statistical information, empirical data, and numbers on all of the eight major crime categories for unincorporated Clayton County, as well as all of Clayton County, at the next Clayton County Board of Commissioners' regular business meeting. Good day.
Alvin Farmer, oh, I'm sorry.
One quick second, I do want to just make one comment to you, Dr. Anderson. We've been meeting with the school board, and I could tell you that the officials of the school board have committed to making sure that they put forth an effort to have even greater transparency in the communication of those incidents going on, and they have been meeting with our chief as well.
I want to add to that, too, Dr. Anderson. I know on three occasions, I've asked you about doing some volunteering and mentoring at Mondays Mall High School in the area where I work and where you live. And, you know, and, I mean, and all three times, you told me you couldn't deal with these kids. And I, you know, and as a person who works with kids every day, we need people who are strong, and, you know, we're gonna help our kids, we're gonna love them, but I'm just, just had to mention that.
I just only wanted to say, I'm looking into doing mentoring work with the elementary and the pre-kindergarten students, the high school students, yes, there is a problem, and there is resistance in terms of the professionalism I would like to bring. And we can meet if you want me to, and we can discuss better ways. So maybe I, it's the bad high school students, but there are good ones. So that's all that I wanted to say.
They're all students, they're all students.
They're violent. On Channel Two News, there was a violent incidence on the Channel Two News just the day before I came to the commission meeting. There are problems, that's all I'm saying. And the statistics bear it out. But thank you very much, and thank you for letting me come up to address, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Farmer.
Alvin Farmer, unincorporated Clayton County. Each one of y'all have a piece of paper that I printed out. This information dealing with the school information, if you have kids, no kids, grandkids, whatever, this information, used correctly, will qualify them to go to Harvard or any college of their choosing. Also, it will qualify them, I gave them information on how to get the money to go to the, go to those schools. I printed that out on the Hope Scholarship, which means helping opportunities people excel. They have twenty-two colleges and eighty-five campuses in the state of Georgia. If they qualify for Hope, Hope will pay one hundred percent tuition for this. And the rest of the information, which I got last week from a lady, she told me that Clayton County Public Library is doing all they can to educate our kids, but our kids are not using this resource. I gotta bring this to you, and Mrs. Gregory, you were saying that Dr. Anderson want, wants you to, he should go to school and help, well, I want to go to school to help, and I am barred from that. That's why I gotta bring this, this information to, to the board. And each one of y'all that has a district, y'all should take this to your school. I called the Board of Education six months ago about this donorschoose.org. They've been in business eighteen years, they done gave about eight hundred and twenty-five million dollars to individual teachers for whatever they need for, that is legitimate. And I called Monday Mills High School complaining to him, because he want me to pay five dollars for a, to go to a volleyball match, and he did not get the word. So the information is not getting passed. The second part is, only got three minutes to help our code enforcement. Those five agencies that I have at the bottom there, they pick up, everybody but Goodwill, those other four, the first four will come to your house and pick up your stuff that you want to get rid of. Also, they will give you a thing so you can claim the money on your taxes. So we can, that's another beautification thing that we could be going on with our, with our Clayton County. I still haven't got the full definition of R-T-A-C-C about that. Somebody gave me something, but it ain't exact, I need exact information. In this pamphlet here, you got M-R-R, I don't know what M-R-R means. I informed you, I don't like acronyms. When I put it on, on my paper, you don't have acronyms, and then the way you supposed to do it in English is, you spell out the whole thing first, and then you put it in prevents you, the acronym is the same way I did it on the paper. So we need to work on that, because I've been talking for that a while, and we still ain't got a fix to that. And that should be a simple fix. Thank y'all, oh, recycling thing, real quick. This come from my hometown, Wilson, North Carolina, the recycling, they are doing that. I still need to work on my recycling program, and the county need to use it also.
Your time's up, sir. If you want to leave that, or is that yours, you want to leave that with us, so we can take it?
Hey, I can do that.
Mr. Farmer, I know you've been accusing us of using acronyms, and I see you use one too, the Hope, you mentioned the Hope Scholarship?
Yes. If you read my paper, I spelt it out. Hope means helping opportunities people excel. I spelt it out. Maybe you need to get your glasses fixed, because I did that.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Did you know what Hope, Hope means?
Oh, yes, yes.
Your time is up, sir, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Sure, both my daughters received Hope.
Thank you, sir. Timothy Von Dell Jefferson.
Timothy Von Dell Jefferson, unincorporated Clayton County. And as a citizen of this community, and a very passionate one, I am quite disturbed at we keep shooting ourselves in the foot. Developers are watching us, and I know this for a fact, I talk to them constantly, monitoring the Development Authority. They have a strong desire to come to our community. But with the law firm and certain lawyers representing certain authorities, which is an obvious conflict of interest, and with the facts stated that I knew of, I, two weeks ago, personally reached out to B.J. Park, the Attorney General for the United States of America. And he assigned me an attorney, and they are monitoring this case, so I am gonna call them in the morning to try to see if we can file an injunction against that Development Authority, because I think all members, the attorney, and certain commissioners need to be deposed before we move forward. They have literally just stolen four point nine million dollars from the citizens of this community. So now, they are in control of ten point four million dollars. They are in, able to do whatever they wanted to do with those funds, and they are using consultants and comprehensive plans to maneuver this money, so that everybody makes sure they get their fair share. So hopefully, they are monitoring this meeting tonight, and as a citizen of this community, I think that we need some outside help. I don't think it's gonna come internally, so I am officially going to request, first thing in the morning, that the Attorney General of the United States put a cease and desist order on this until there's a full and thorough investigation done. Thank you.
Mickey Garber.
Mickey Garber, unincorporated Rex, Georgia. The topic of my conversation this evening is Resolution two thousand eighteen dash one twenty-two. The orchestrator of this new writing of the agreement is not here. He's left his chairs empty. The facilitators of that agreement, or the puppets, I may add, are sitting here. I won't have to mention their names, we know who they are. My friend Von Dell Jefferson made allusions to everyone getting their fair share. The ones not getting their fair share of ten point, ten point two million dollars are the citizens and taxpayers of Clayton County. This board, or the Development Board, has orchestrated a plan to wrestle decisions that should be made by the Board of Commissioners. They are, they are putting walls up so that the people of Clayton County don't have integrity or transparency. With that being said, Ms. Hamburg, you come up for reelection in two years. We've managed to get Mr. Edmondson removed. I will ask you, please don't ask me for any reelection contributions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment. There being no further business for this board, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second, those in favor, I.
Farmer.
Oppose?
Oh, I, is it all I?
It's unanimous.
Yeah.